Welcome to the Winthrop School Committee meeting for Monday, November 27th, 2017 at 6:30 in the Harvey Gary Room, Town Hall. Ms. Haynes, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Vecchia.
Present.
Mr. Kapabianco.
Present.
Mr. Holden.
Yes.
Mr. Sanford.
Yes.
Mr. Perron.
Yes.
Ms. Vallen.
Yes. This meeting will be televised live and also be recorded. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Up first on our agenda, we have student representatives from the senior class, the senior class president and the junior class president. Superintendent Howard, would you please introduce them?
Sure. So Michaela Norris is our senior class president, and she had a stand-in tonight who was going to come in and present for her, who got sick last minute, so our senior class is not going to be able to present this evening. But Michaela said she will be at an upcoming meeting, the December meeting, and she'll do double time, so I assured her that that would not be a problem. This is the junior class president, Ava Bettino, and she's going to give you a little bit of an update on the junior class.
Yeah, so hi, everyone. Just an update on the junior class. So earlier this month, we had the annual country fair. It's kind of something that the juniors do every fall. It's the biggest fundraiser of the high school career, so it was super important. We started planning it in late March of this year. So since then, we basically just kind of went to all sorts of small businesses and solicited donations and kind of just major planning from that point.
Lots of, tons of, tons of stuff.
Yeah. We had over 300 prizes at the fair, and we kind of got all the students to be involved. We had over like 50 students volunteers, as well as all the help from the parents. So thank you to all of the small businesses in the community for helping us with that. We actually raised just under $11,000, which is so great.
That's very good.
So great.
A lot of people there. Was it St. John's?
Yeah, St. John's. So yeah, we had a great turnout. So for like the upcoming events on the agenda, we're going to start planning the sophomore junior social in January. And although we don't have any major events going on right now, we always like to look ahead. Also finding a venue for the 2019 prom.
Where is the social going to be, do you know?
Most likely Cottage Park Yacht Club.
Okay, nice.
We still have to kind of like fix everything out, but that's mostly set in stone. And then just, oh, and then around Easter time, we always do kind of like a major bake sale in French Square in Michael's Mall, so that's also a really nice fundraiser that we have planned. And then up until then, we're just going to try to maybe get in some small fundraisers in here and there, but that's-
How was the pep rally?
Oh, the pep rally was great.
Would you come in?
We came in second.
Big surprise.
This year, we actually tried to, with the power of social media and just kind of just talking to a bunch of our students, we tried to get a lot of students involved. And I'm super proud of our class at the moment because we showed a lot of participation this year, like spirit week days and like the dodgeball tournament I think we won. So that's just like an event that we do as well.
And lots of extra kids, so trying to increase participation-
Yeah, definitely.
-in that particular day to get school spirit going the whole week ahead of time. They do a different color on each day.
Yeah.
Try to encourage participation of all students and try to make sure that no one is left out. And I think this year, you guys had more students than participated last year, so-
Definitely.
And that was sort of their goal. So I think that's, you know, super impressive that they sort of go out of their way to make sure that they're inclusive of all. So I went to pep rally, and not going to lie, it was kind of fun. I wanted to be in the tug-of-war. My heels wouldn't allow me to do that, but next year, I'm going to wear sneakers for sure. So I would jump on the back of the senior class train all during, I think it was the tug-of-war. Were you guys against the seniors?
Oh, no. I think it was the teachers against the seniors.
Teachers, oh, that's right. And then the seniors came out of the woodwork, so they all came down out of the stands, and the teachers did the exact same thing. They all came out of the bleachers, and then we sort of ended before there was a calamity. But it was, I thought it was very well attended, and the students were excellent. You know, very welcome. Very welcome. So is that about it?
Yeah, that's about it.
So you're going to see this lovely lady monthly to come in and give us, give us her updates, and I don't know if anyone here has any questions for her, but if not, I will let her go do her homework, right? Because that's what you're going to do. Any questions from the committee for her? No? All right.
I'll just say thank you so much for coming. It's not easy to come and speak in a room like this in front of a bunch of people like us. But so thank you so much for your update, and we look forward to hearing from you monthly. And please do not hesitate to come to us with anything that's maybe more difficult to talk about or share with any of your classmates that, you know, we're here if there is anything more difficult and challenging that we need to address.
And I'm coaching, so I told her that I would sit next to her and coach her through it. So if there are difficult things that come up, I am going to encourage the students to bring it before the school committee if it's something that really needs to be talked about and discussed. I think it's a good idea for them to self-advocate, you know, for their class, and you become a better public speaker in doing this, so.
Absolutely.
Good job.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
Next on our agenda, we have correspondence, of which we had none this session, and public comments. We're down to public comment. Ms. Chavez?
Yes, I just want to thank the school committee. At one of the last meetings, I asked for an update on utilities, and I see there's going to be annual gender for the budget subcommittee meeting on December 1st. Unfortunately, I can't be there. I have to weather finance meetings that night in middle fields and town, but I do appreciate it. And Ms. Eccles did say that she'll send it to me the day after she presents it.
Yeah, most certainly. And we'll send it any minutes that came up from the budget subcommittee, too. Thank you. Is there any other public comment tonight? Next, on our agenda, we have the minutes from November 13th, 2017 for approval. They were in our packets for review. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Mr. Vecchia. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by President Sanford. Any discussion on the minutes? There was one spelling error. Did you get that, Patty? Oh, you got that. Yep.
In public relations?
Yes, yes. Thank you. Got it. Everything else is good? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions?
Abstentions.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next, we have financial business. We have the warrants. Pardon me. We have warrant SBW 18-9 in the amount of $10688. We have a payroll warrant SBW 18-9 in the amount of $670,329.07. We'll take the budget transfer separately. I'll make a motion to accept both of those warrants together for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vecchia. Any discussion on the warrants? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions? Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. We have some budget transfers in the amount of $35,654.59. Superintendent Howard, is this, this is some more kind of cleaning up lines that you've been doing?
It is.
Looks like there's some leases for coffee machines and other kinds of things that needed to be moved around.
Correct. And again, it's going through each one of those line items and taking a peek at the actuals and sort of tightening it up a little bit. So as we project for 19, FY19, we have a clear, a clearer sense of what we've spent to date, and as we begin to make those projections, having those numbers clear is helpful to me, and I'm sure will be helpful to you as well.
It is very helpful, actually. Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the budget transfers. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by President Sanford. Any discussion on the budget transfers? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have two donations. We have, we can take them together. One is the Margaret Rebecca Lodge donated $250. I believe that they give us a donation every year, which is very generous of them, right here in Winthrop. And then we have a $400 donation from the Zonta Club of Chelsea.
Madam Chair, with the Zonta Club-
Yes.
They had come up to the school and provided us with gift cards so that we could use those gift cards in $25 increments for families in need during the holiday time. So we were, they were able to break that $400 up so we can evenly distribute it to each one of our schools. There was a greater need in one school than the other. And so we've identified where those cards will be going and wanted to thank them. It's something they do yearly, and I'm very grateful for both of those donations.
So I'll make a motion to accept both donations. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vecchia. Any discussion on the motions? Thank you again to the Margaret Rebecca Lodge and the Zonta Club of Chelsea for your generous donations, which I believe we receive annually. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstentions? Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Excuse me. Next on our agenda, we have buildings and grounds. There are no buildings and grounds usage requests tonight. Curriculum. Superintendent Howard, there's nothing on the curriculum. Did you want to make any comments or mention of curriculum tonight?
Not at this time.
Next, we have subcommittee reports. We had a wellness subcommittee meeting a couple of weeks ago, and present was myself, Matt Sereno, Ben Semino, Tara Bowie, and I think that was it. And what came up is our wellness policy has to do with nutrition in the schools and how we're following the Smart Snacks at School guidelines that are mandated from the government and how things need to have certain ingredients and not have other kinds of ingredients that are being served in the school. And a good conversation came up around, for example, the Spanish program having an annual Spanish meal where the students actually cook at home. And so what we did was we emailed the Spanish teacher and got some feedback from her which, about how we can inform the parents that the students might be eating homemade meals that might not comply with the Smart Snacks at School program, which is what our policy says. So we're working on, working with the superintendent and the committee, we're working on some kind of a form that would, the parents would sign acknowledging that if they're making a homemade dish, that they would do their best to comply with these Smart Snacks at School guidelines and that their stu-, that it's okay if their student eats a homemade meal that does not comply with the guidelines. So it's a little tricky, and a lot of it has to do with compliance of a mandated regulation that came down on us last June. So we're trying to figure out how to not take away programs in our schools because we're following a policy. And an enrichment program like that seems worth saving, so we're just trying to be creative in how we can do that without having issues with the policy. And another thing that came up was students vaping around school areas, and there's, there's major concern from high school teachers that students are vaping in the community, and what is the school department doing around either education or prevention? I had a short discussion with Superintendent Howard. Do you want to speak to that?
Sure. We actually have an upcoming meeting with parents and staff as well, and Mr. Crombie, just to do some education around what vaping is and to bring it to the attention of our parents that we are seeing students, all students. It's not, not a certain group of students. It's, it could be a student from any one of our many groups of students, either at the high school, elementary, or even as low down as the elementary school level, so in middle school. So it's something that we're very concerned about. We've actually worked with the town's school, the town's nurse because she has sort of a wider array of hospitals and whatnot that she deals with to get some feedback as to whether or not this is something that's being seen just community-wide as well, and she feels that it is. So we're going to work with our parents to come up with a solution. We're worried about Principal Crombie and myself, as well as the athletic director. We're worried about the impact it is having on our students in terms of discipline. So, you know, to suspend students every time you catch a student vaping and then you see that the vaping is increasing, it seems as though suspension is certainly not slowing it down. So we need to come up with some alternatives. And educating our students is one way, but educating our parents, we believe, is another way. I've also spoken with the acting town manager about some concerns that parents and students have brought to our attention about places where they can buy the materials to vape. And it's interesting to see the understanding, or hear and hear the understanding that parents and students have around what vaping actually is. And so I've educated myself, not as deeply as I need to, but enough to understand that I didn't know how, how involved this could be for our students and how addictive it can be. So we are certainly not turning our heads away from it and actually trying to get in front of it and be proactive with working with our students as opposed to just reactive and doing multiple suspensions, because suspending certainly sends a message that we're tolerated, but it also has such an impact on just students as a whole, whether it's participating in after-school activities or sports or, you know, having that consequence and then going home and having additional conversations with parents and maybe some punishment. We prefer to educate our students to know why they should not be doing this. And I'm also not surprised, but understanding of why parents aren't so informed about vaping, it's new. Many of the students believe that it's just water vapor, and in some cases it is, but in many cases it involves nicotine and could potentially involve anything else. So we're worried enough about this that we are taking a little bit of a more active role than, than in the past.
Have we identified areas in Winthrop that the kids can purchase this?
We have. We have, and the kids are really forthcoming, which is great. And so we provide that information.
Are there guidelines as to how old they have to be, or can anybody get it?
So I believe there are guidelines around it, and I'm not sure. I know at the state level that the guidelines are really being looked at according to our town nurse because they're, it's so new, and I think-
Yeah. I know, most, most local vendors and food chain-
Go ahead, yes.
You know, pretty responsible. There was one issue where they were cited locally, and there was some concern, but the police department is looking into any particulars to make sure that this doesn't happen across Winthrop. Again, most of our local vendors are very responsible.
Sure.
Could, could the health department impose restrictions on the sale of it? Yes, yeah. Are they in the loop with this?
Most definitely. And I think a lot of, yeah, I think a lot of that collaborative effort along with having a school resource officer and sort of these multiple groups talking together and often is definitely helpful. And like President Sanford said, the majority of our, of our town stores have been very open and quick to respond and understand that this is a concern for us and just wake up a little bit to know that, you know, we don't want any of our students buying this product. And if they are buying it, you know, they better be of age, you know?
Yeah. I had quite a few questions myself about it and needed some education, just in terms of, you know, is it physically addictive? Like if we're taking this away from students, do we need to provide them with something else, you know? Is it, is it, if we take it away from them, are they having trouble attending to classes because of an addiction? So I, I wouldn't mind actually if, if someone was able to come and present some really basic education even to the school committee as well at some point. I think, you know, as many people in the community are aware of this, the better. And, you know, I, I really didn't know very much about it until a few weeks ago at the wellness committee, so I was glad it got brought up. The other thing I want to say about the wellness committee is we are looking for parent representatives. There are currently no parents on the committee. And by guidelines and because it's the right thing to do, we should have a couple of parents on it. So if anyone is willing to serve, we meet less than once a month, usually to talk about how the policy's being integrated into the four schools that we have. So if there is someone who's interested, please email or contact me. You can contact me through Patty in the central office or me directly on the email. I think it's just dsullivan@winthrop.k12.m a.us. Sorry, I'm losing my voice.
And we also have a partnership with a grant that has recently been written through the town's health department and, and the schools. And it involves Winthrop, Winthrop, Chelsea, Revere, and Saugus, I believe. So I met with the Parks and Rec director from Saugus, who's also part of, it's part of the recovery coaches that we have in town. And there is, part of the grant is hiring a liaison to work with students in each one of those four districts. Now, it's one person who is, I believe, sharing two and a half days of their work week in providing education to students. So in meeting with the, the Saugus Parks and Rec department, just trying to find out how are you using it in Saugus? Saugus has more time of this person through the grant than Winthrop does, but I would most, most likely are going to try to use it in the same way. And they have other partnerships within their community, as do we with CASA, and we're working with CASA as well on this. I have a meeting with them beginning of next week to talk again about how to utilize this individual, how much time of this person are we going to have, and what are they actually going to do. But it's student-directed, and it's, it's around adolescent students on priorities of the community, but really geared towards the kids. And we do have our, our relationship with CASA. My concern is more of the students that don't come out of the high school and go to CASA programs or avail themselves of any of our diversion programs, those students that are sort of on the bubble. And how do we reach those students to, to teach them how to make better choices and to teach them what the better choices are? So that is in the making, and I, like I said, I'm going to meet with CASA next week. But also, the Saugus Parks and Rec gentleman is going to come back as well and give us a little bit more information on how it's working out at Saugus High and see if it would be something that we could, you know, take a look at and see if we could do something very similar or if something tweaking a little bit to, to meet our needs. So that partnership is nice. It's a, it's a small grant, but it will give us somebody to come in. And the person who's doing it is a younger person, I would say, in his twenties, and really has a nice way with kids based on the resume I read, but also a couple of the stories I've heard about how he's interacted with students in Saugus so far.
Great.
So more to come on that.
Okay, thank you. We also had the superintendent Contract Bargaining Subcommittee, which was all an executive session, so I have nothing to report on that tonight. And we are now down to the superintendent's report.
Sure.
Superintendent Howard, I'll let you take that.
Thank you. We are, believe it or not, entering into some budget planning with the principals starting this week and taking a little bit of a different plan than the past, which I think the principals have been open to and have participated in designing some of the information that I would like to see and be able to work with them on in terms of how they foresee their building running in FY19. So starting tomorrow, we will be meeting to take a look at just budget planning as individuals. So each principal meets with me during the week, will talk about their own projections in terms of student enrollment and, and materials, supplies, curriculum that they need. It's probably about a five-session per principal workshop, about two hours apiece. And in doing it, the, the idea is to really take a look at your building as a principal and your school improvement plan, your site council, taking into account some of the needs that they have expressed throughout this year or, as well as needs that they expressed last year, where you're, you are with that within your building. Projections of students are very easy to, it's easy to predict, except for your kindergarten, because you can take a look at the students you have now and then project where you're going to be next year, and looking at class size, looking at groupings. It's a, certainly a plan that is a little bit different for them because it's a little bit deeper than what they're used to doing. So we begin that process tomorrow, and I'm excited to see how that rolls out so that I can report back to the committee. And we will come together as a group, probably three-quarters of the way through it, so that each one of the principals can present in front of the other principals, what they're thinking, what their projections look like, what types of materials and supplies they need, taking a look at their curriculum and how that looks for the grades below and vertical teaming to make sure we're staying the same vertical path so that we could also have comment with each other as, as to how each building is looking and have a sense of probably within, I would say, six, six to eight, six to, probably six weeks. I was being, giving them a little bit more, but I think we're at sort of a crunch time. In about six weeks, doing a larger presentation to the building, so each principal presenting with me to their building and then gaining some feedback from the teachers. The final steps in that process will be presenting to the community, so have a night that the community will be able to hear what each principal is thinking prior to going to our school committee budget presentation. So we'll have a little bit from the community, including the parents, some from the teachers, and some from the principal, from the superintendent, all back to you so that you sort of have a wider array of what folks are thinking. So more to come on that. I was able to attend Rock of Ages, which was our play. It was an amazing performance. Everywhere I went in town for a week or two, people were talking about it, and, and I could see why, because the cast improved. It was flawless. I happened to go on the first night, and it was equally as good as, as the last night. The students were amazing, and congratulations to Karen, just for another stellar production. Country Fair, I also went to. Loaded, loaded, loaded with people and prizes and sort of elbow to elbow. And like you heard from, from Ava, they made a lot of money for their class. That's usually their prom. They, they base their prom off of the, the earnings from that, and the community really steps up to the plate and provides tons and tons of gift cards and baskets and for, for the students. So, and the students really work hard. You, you walk in and it's so organized. It's certainly an ADHD nightmare for a person like me because there's table after table after table, and then they have tons of colored tickets that you have to separate, and so it was a little much for me, but it definitely worked out for, for the students. We started our PLCs, professional learning communities, back a while ago, and I've received some really good feedback from Guidance as well as our ELL teaching staff on what it means to get together and be able to sit in a room as a group of professionals and talk about best practice at elementary through 12. So lots of discussion about vertical teaming coming out of that, and lots of discussion about wanting to continue to do it. Guidance is working on all being in the same room together, talking about what our course handbooks look like, gaining information from other school districts to see how we may be able to improve not only the look, but the content of what we're presenting to our students in that handbook. So those PLCs are, are working well. Let's see, just shout out to the Fall NEC All-Stars, the boys soccer team. We have Steven Tracy as an NEC All-Star, girls soccer, Gabby Henschen, and I had the opportunity to see Gabby in action in a, in a very tough girls soccer game, and I'm hoping she's going to throw a pair of skates on, because if she's that good on her feet, I can imagine what she'd be like in the net with a pair of skates on. Volleyball NEC's, we had Lacy Scott, Fatima Tufa, Amanda Kokoneshi, all very good volleyball players. Lacy Scott's mother is one of the coaches, too. And in golf, Koby Dasaw and Evan Smutrich. So to those, those guys. Last, but certainly not least, the Thanksgiving Day game went off without a hitch. Although the score did not reflect a win, I can assure you that our student athletes and coaches put Winthrop above anybody else on that field on that day. They conducted themselves with class and sportsmanship that exemplified what I would say is true Viking spirit, and they should be very proud of themselves. A huge thank you to Matt Sereno and Matt Crombie for organizing the event. It took several weeks to organize just the day and the activity on the field, and the following people joined us and helped us. And I can tell you that we could not have done it without Ellen Baxter, Amy Gallagher, Diane Duplin, Joni Cinderella, Vasili Malios, Kyle Gagin, Anthony Hartzavasis, Mr. Ron Beck, Rachel Del Solio, Mr. Peter Gill, Patty Haynes, Beth Bailey, and Jim Latier, as well as Michael D. Calleese, Stephen Skobeloff, John Shea, Jeff Beck, Dan Hubert, and Frank. Additionally, I'd like to thank Vinnie-
I forgot his last name.
I know what-
D. Petriantonio.
D. Petriantonio. I left that to you. Additionally, Vinnie Crossman, Vasili, Angelo Vigliotta, Tom Chudina, and John McDougall, who stayed after the game and helped pick up, and I can attest to this, every last coffee cup and every field marker that needed to be picked up and put away. It was, it was neat to open up the field on that day. I could tell you I had butterflies before the game, during the game, and then after the game was able to just say, okay, you know, we did this. What a beautiful place to play a football game. So I'm looking forward to spring sports and, and planning for how we're going to get that off the ground. Matt Sereno and I start up again on Friday with the plans for that. Other than that, um, MCAS overview will be presented on December eighteenth. And my superintendent monthly newsletter will be out Thursday and give you some more detail about the individual schools, uh, as part of the superintendent's report.
Great.
And I think that's it.
Any questions about the superintendent's report?
No.
Thank you, we can move on to personnel.
Personnel. At this, um, date, we do not have any appointments or resignations. We do have two retirements. John McDougall, who's been a longtime custodian in the school district and was very helpful on Thanksgiving Day, will be retiring, as well as Lorraine DeFranjo, who has been an ESP in the district, um, for quite some time, worked with many, many students and, uh, has done a wonderful job for us. So, I wish them the best and hope they enjoy, uh, their retirement. For posting, we are posting the junior custodial position for December. And leave of absence, we have none at this time.
Thank you, Superintendent Howard. Um, next, under new business, we have a request to increase the middle school activity account. Um, by Ms. Eccles, from five thousand dollars to ten thousand dollars. Um, I think this is a good thing, it just means that they ha- have more money in the account.
The activities that they take care of in that school have increased in the past few years because of the new school. Student council has really, um, I know Ellen Baxter, I think is their advisor, has really done a lot. And what happens is with only the five thousand, with drama being what it is, uses up all that money. So by the time they do a transfer, they have to submit that to me and we do a transfer at the town. But it takes a few weeks and then that leaves them with nothing in there for the other activities. So, they have called me to request that we increase it from the five to the ten.
Mr. Perrin?
Motion to increase it from five thousand to ten thousand?
Second.
Second by Mr. Beck, is there any discussion on the motion? Um, this motion and this request do, do not conflict with any policy that we have. So, thank you for checking that out also. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions?
Thank you.
Thank you, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Susan, for standing on top of that. Under unfinished business, we have a school committee vacancy, which, um, will stay under unfinished business tonight. And we are back to public comment. Is there any, uh, more public comment tonight? Um, excuse me, we're down to public relations, Mr. Beck?
Saturday December second, Arthur T. Cummings, PTO, Holiday Craft and Vendor Fair. From eleven to one. Santa will be there with Mrs. Claus to take pictures.
Oh, nice.
Pretty close for instance.
Awesome. Sure he's gonna show up?
Yeah.
That'll be fun.
As long as they shut the heat off.
What a fan. Nice time of year. Mr. Gabbianco? I don't have anything to say either. Mr. Perrin? President Sanford? Mr. Holden? Excellent. Motion to adjourn?
Susie.
All right, Mr. Gabbianco, I'll second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Adjourn. Thank you.